Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank you. First, we have the good news portion. Dr. Rice?
All right. Thank you, board members. And I'll be calling the names. We will start with the soil and water essay and slideshow contest winners for middle school. And when I call your name, if you would, it's up to Ms. McGee to get your certificate. And then I would ask that you stand over here for just a few minutes and let our board members get a picture with you as well. We'll start with our essay contest in the 6th grade at Southeastern Stokes Middle School. First place, Jason Walsh. Also, in our essay contest, in second place, Reed Tilly. And for the slideshow contest, in 6th grade, also Southeastern Stokes Middle School, Grayson Hicks. All right. And if we could, go ahead and get pictures with our winners, board members. The South Stokes Art Program has been extremely busy. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards have been recognizing talented art students since 1923, and it is the longest-running, most prestigious program for young artists in the United States. The Scholastic Awards Program provides students opportunities for recognition, exhibition, publication, and scholarships. Students are encouraged to submit original works of art and writing for the annual competition. Works are judged on originality, technical skill, and emergence of a personal voice or vision. And last year, there were over 340,000 works submitted across the country. Four students from South Stokes were recently selected for regional awards. We are proud to announce the South Stokes High School Art Department received 15 regional awards, which include eight Gold Keys, three Silver Keys, and four Honorable Mentions in this year's competition. Gold Keys are the highest award, and these eight works will go on to be judged on the national stage. National Gold and Silver Medal Award recipients will be invited to attend the exhibit in New York and the award ceremony at Carnegie Hall. We will go ahead and start. Kendall Willard. Yes, Kendall had soccer, but I will just mention, there are several awards here. Gold Key, Art Portfolio Fractured, Art Portfolio Introspection, Drawing and Illustration Mercurial, a Gold Key, Drawing and Illustration, and it goes down the list with more. So this is a very impressive portfolio. Next up, under Design Castle, Jaden Weevil. Yes. Under Drawing and Illustration, thank you. Under Drawing and Illustration, Repent Monroe in the Roaring Twenties, Abigail Fulp. All right. Also, under Drawing and Illustration, Flor Rodriguez. All right. Those are our winners, board members. Could we please pose for another photo? Yes. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're dead wrong.
Thank you. I would also like to say thank you to the educators who are here in support. Ms. Crandall, thank you for the work that you do with your students. And Ms. Cheek, we appreciate you being here supporting your students as well. Let's get one more round, please. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments. Is that correct?
Do we have anyone? No one signed up.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda, which is item A, approval of work session minutes for March 1st, 2021. Any discussion regarding those minutes or corrections? Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Next. Yeah. At this time, if anyone would like to leave, feel, please feel free to do so, and we appreciate you all and are very proud. Thank you. Next, on the discussion agenda, we have the audit presentation, item A.
Hello, this is April Bell. Do you want us to move forward with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'm April Bell. Many of you may remember me from years past when we've done the, the presentation of the audit or the conclusion of the audit. We are going to share our presentation with you again tonight, like we have in years past. I'm going to try to share my screen now and present the PowerPoint presentation to you. So, hmm. I'm not sure. See, yeah. Okay. Can you see that, the first page of the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So it is a pleasure to be with you here tonight. With me tonight is Paige Alfred, who is a manager with DHD, and she works with me on many school board audits across the state of North Carolina. It's a pleasure to be with you to report the results from your audit. And during our time with you tonight, we are going to, just to make sure, get it advanced to the next slide. Can you see the agenda on your screen now? Do that?
Yes.
Any agenda? Okay, perfect. Okay. So during our time with you tonight, we're going to discuss the results of the audit. Paige is going to go through the communications to the board, the report to the board, deliverable that you received. I'm going to review the financial highlights, and then Paige is going to take it back over to wrap us up, reviewing the results of the compliance audit. So just want to mention, before we get started, you're probably thinking, okay, this is March 15th. Typically, DHD is presenting the results of the audit in maybe September or October. And you are right. This year, we did have a delay in finishing the audit because we were waiting for the OMB to release the compliance supplement for one of your major federal programs, which is the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We received right at $300,000, we spent almost $300,000 of the Coronavirus Relief Fund monies this year, and we were required to call it that group. But that created a delay, and us being able to finish the audit because the compliance supplement wasn't available. But we did get that in early January, and so we were able to finish the audit and submit it to the LGC. Good results there. Paige is going to share with you the results of the testing of the Coronavirus Relief Funds in just a little bit. But first, I'm going to have her go through the results of the audit.
All right. Can everyone hear me as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. As April said, I helped with the, the audit of Stokes County Schools this year. This has been, you know, I've been on this job for a couple of years now, and it's always a pleasure. We, we definitely appreciate all of Lynette's hard work and, and everyone on the finance team, and there, anyone who had to scan something to us this year, given this remote working environment. We definitely appreciate your help and are very thankful for your patience, as we all kind of had this learning curve this year. As April mentioned, I'm going to go through the discussion of the audit results for this year. Do the next slide. All right. So this little snippet here is what all the hard work that everyone contributes is primarily for. This is the audit opinion that we were able to issue for this year. This is what's considered an unmodified, an unmodified opinion, and this is the one that you want to get. This opinion basically states that the financial use, financial statement users get an indication that the information is materially accurate and that the financial statements may be relied upon. Our full audit opinion has a few more paragraphs that go along with it, but they are within page one of the financial statement report. Overall, we had no major issues. Again, everyone was, was wonderful to work with this year, and I believe we got things done as efficiently as if we had been in person, really. So this is the opinion for 2020. Next item that we'll go over is the review of the communications to the board report. This report is available to all the board members. It does carry with it a few significant items that we are required to communicate to the board each year. The first item being any significant estimates or sensitive disclosures that were encountered throughout our audit testing. We've identified these as being the useful lives of depreciable assets, as well as the proportionate share of the net pension liability and OPEB liabilities for the retirement plans. Within the report to the board, we also communicate any difficulties or disagreements that may have occurred with management throughout the audit procedures. Thankfully, we can report that we had no such difficulties or disagreements with management throughout our testing this year, nor did we expect any. We also cover in this report any uncorrected misstatements that may have been discovered throughout our testing but were elected by management not to be posted. We did not have any uncorrected misstatements for this year. We did have a few small adjustments that were proposed by us and recorded by management, none of which were material to the financial statements. But again, there were no uncorrected misstatements or adjustments that were passed on for this year. Lastly, within the report to the board, we include the management representations that were made to us. In the last pages of the report to the board, you will see a signed management rep letter of all the representations that were given to us during the course of this audit. And then I believe the next part, I'm going to pass this back to April to cover some of our financial statement highlights.
All right. Thanks, Paige. So as we've done in years past, instead of going through the financial statements in detail, we have prepared some charts and graphs for you just to walk you through some of the highlights of the financial statements. If you have any questions while I'm going through the information, please feel free to stop me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll pause for a period at the end as well, and you're probably welcome to ask me any questions at that time, if you have any. So this first chart relates to your revenues or your sources of funds. You can see here that your funding sources were very consistent over the last three years. You can see that you did continue to have a small increase in your funding from the state. Again, remember that many, much of your state funding is related to positional allotments. So that could have caused some changes in your dollars that were received from the state, as well as continued increases in your retirement contributions that are required, as well as insurance costs that you don't have any control over. You also had a very small increase in your general and special revenue funds this year, as well as your federal funds, but very consistent overall for all of your funding sources for the last three years. And just one thing that I wanted to point out is that your state revenue does represent about 70% of your total governmental revenue. So that, that just kind of gives you an idea of the amount of funding that you do receive from the state. Now we're going to take a look at your expenditures, and, and one of the things that we like to point out every year are your expenditures by fiscal code. And so the state mandates a chart of accounts that all LDA's across the state are required to use. And so one thing that we do every year is we look at your expenditures for instructional and other type expenditures to compute your percentage of funds that are used for instructional expenditures. And you can see here that you have a small increase in your instructional expenditures this year, which is noteworthy that you were able to maintain a consistent use of expenditures throughout this COVID environment. That was so unusual. I bet you did use 76.1% of your total expenditures, governmental expenditures, on instructional type expenditures. This next chart is your fund balance, and it shows how fund balance has changed over the last three years. Great job there, because you were able to really save. You had some, some cost savings in your expenditures in fiscal year '20. In fact, your school leadership had a cost savings of $110,000, and your operational, before expenditures were under budget, about $175,000. This allowed you to increase your general and special revenue fund fund balances from 2018 to 63020. So great, great work there, and, and really noteworthy, because you'll remember a couple of years ago, how small your fund balance was, the unassigned fund balance. And so you can see, you took your total fund balance two years ago from $1.3 million to right at $2 million for fiscal year '20. And you had an increase of, of your unassigned fund balance from about $200,000 in 2018 to just over $800,000 in 2020. So very beneficial for you this year to be able to save on some of those expenditures and increase your fund balance to a level that provides greater sources of funds going forward. And you can see here, one of the things that we look at when we look at your fund balance is the fund balance as it represents a percentage of your total expenditures in the general and special revenue funds. And you can see here that your unassigned fund balance, which is the fund balance that is available for appropriation, represented right at 6% of total expenditures. That's an improvement from almost, from just 1.5% of expenditures in 2018. So good work there in, in increasing your fund balance and getting it to a healthier, healthier level at 63020. So Capital Projects Fund, which is Fund 4, is the fund that's used to account for capital outlay money that you get from the county, as well as money that you get from the state for school bus leases. And you can see here, you have had a consistent level of both activity and balances in this fund for the last three years. So from 2019 to 2020, your cash level was almost flat, as was your fund balance. And that's really just about the only thing that exists in your Capital Projects Fund. You don't have a lot of other activity. Your revenues have been very flat, and I would imagine that the amount of fund balance that you have, which is just over $1 million, is probably earmarked for special purposes, and you know exactly how that, that Capital Projects Fund fund balance is going to be used going forward. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about from a financial statement standpoint is the School Food Service Fund. This is the fund that's used to account for the operations in your cafeteria. And you can see here that you did have a net income this year, which means that your revenues were in excess of your expenses for the year ending 63020. And you've been in that same position for the last couple of years. The one thing that you have to remember or to note for the School Food Service Fund is that this fund is accounted for, as a for-profit entity would be accounted for, which means that this fund accounts for the liabilities related to the OPEB and other retirement liabilities that you have. So it's a little hard to compare apples to apples, but very good results here in that you were able to maintain profitable status for the year ending 6302020. All right. Now I'm going to pass it to Paige, but I will stop for just a few minutes and just make sure no one has any questions about the financial information. All right. Paige, do you want to walk us through the compliance audit?
Absolutely, yeah. So as we previously noted, in addition to the financial statement audit, we do also conduct a compliance audit over federal and state programs, which are deemed to be major. The criteria for determining the program as a major program is set by our auditing standards and is based on various testing and coverage thresholds. Based on our analysis in the federal programs category, we noted two federal major programs that were required to be audited. These were the Child Nutrition Cluster, as well as the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We are happy to present that we had no reportable findings as a result of our testing in these programs. Along with that, we had one state program that qualified as major and was required to be audited in 2020. This was a state public school fund. We are also happy to, to note that we had no reportable findings from our testing in this program. And as things go, we are also very appreciative for those of you who helped us with the testing of our compliance audits. These require a lot of little tiny detail testing, especially with the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and that one being new this year. It was very helpful for everyone who had a hand in all of the sample requests and that we requested from you all. So thank you all for that.
All right. So that concludes our presentation. I, I want to wrap up by just thanking Lynette again and her entire staff for the assistance that they provided us during the audit this year. We were completely remote, as was much of the world over the last year. And it, it did not just, you know, they, they had to do a lot of heavy lifting to make sure that we were able to get the information that we needed to be able to perform the procedures that we needed to perform to be able to finish the audit. So very much appreciate everything that they did, the patience that, that they gave us as we were walking through the procedures, and just very much appreciate it. Are there any other questions, or any questions that anybody has from the board?
Board, if you have any questions, please make sure you have your microphone on so that they'll be able to hear you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. No questions?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Moore. There are no questions? If there are no questions, we'll move on then to discussion, item B, Discussion of Current Expense Fund 2 Amendment 1.
You have Current Expense Fund 2 Amendment number one. As you all are aware, during, after our budget was approved locally from the county commissioners, they gave additional funding for our Fire Academy program. So it shows an increase in county appropriations of $37,341. And then we received some additional revenue from DHHS, a dividend from MetLife, and also some insurance claims. So this makes our budget increase $41,830.07, making a total of $13,495.07. Then you have your next amendment, Current Expense Fund 8, First Amendment. We received some additional NC pre-K funds to pay our pre-K staff bonuses, and that $16,720 increases fund date to $1,793,581.
Did, did that come from the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks.
Does that need to, do these need to be voted on tonight?
It can be moved if you all choose to. So I'm, I'm fine with that, yes.
If you choose, that's up to you guys, if there's a motion to move it.
I make a motion to move it.
Thank you. All right. Seconded, all those in favor of moving that item?
We're moving B and C, correct?
Correct, both amendments. Yes, sir. All those in favor of doing so? Thank you. We will make that action, items C and D. Next, we have item D, Discussion of Bids for North Stokes High and Lawsonville Elementary Roof Projects.
Yes, board members, in your packet, you should have the bid tabulation for the roofing project at North Stokes, B Building, and then Lawsonville Elementary. That's the entire school that's sectioned of the new addition. And on the third page, in the roofing projects, you'll have, that's what the unit pricing and the bid alternance would be for Lawsonville and North Stokes. I'd recommend that we award the bid to Triad Roofing for North Stokes for $59,895, plus the unit pricing. There was $190,000 budgeted for this project. And I also recommend that we use professional roofing at Lawsonville for $195,375, and we have $415,000 budgeted for this project. We use the unit pricing per square foot. The engineer recommended of $17 per square foot. When the engineer did this project, he said there are some things we could do on it that would save us some money, and so, and so we saved some money.
A lot.
A lot.
Thank you, Ricky. You're my hero.
Do you need us moved to action?
Yes, if we could move that to action, that would be great.
Make a motion and we move it to action.
I'm second.
Okay, motion to by Mr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? We'll make that item E. Thank you. Next, we have Discussion of Policy 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
The first alternative basically keeps the general idea that board members are not on, but they can get the superintendent to investigate the subject that is presented, and then the superintendent would respond if necessary. But I also expanded the second paragraph regarding convergence, because I did agree that there's some, the word convergence, it may not be exactly dependent of what we may be called. Now, while I expanded that to talk about emergency or other exigent reasons, that it may be necessary for the board to take action on something that is presented during public calls. And I added the provision that the official response on behalf of the board requires the true bargaining board, and the official response will issue on behalf of the board by the board chair through a hearsay committee as a member of the board's board channel or president of the superintendent. To issue the official response on behalf of the board by the board chair to check what's good. Now, the second alternative is to allow a board member to respond in the or she should desire, that's to make it clear that a response by an individual board member is not the official response of the Board of Education. It is exactly that, an individual board member expressing his or her individual opinion or his or her individual question, which is not to be taken as the official position of the Board of Education. The official position of the Board of Education will only be issued after a drawing vote to issue a chairperson for his or her individual decision. So that leaves you two alternatives on which to choose, if you so desire, or if you wish to come and have the current policy that we have from the Student Association. With that being said, even if you kept the current policy, there's nothing to prevent an individual board member at any time making a comment or asking a question or stating his or her position on a particular subject, but you just want to make it clear that the board's going to be the official decision only takes three votes. Now, I think what we all understand is it takes three votes, the drawing decision, and what I like about this is the chairperson of the board that issues that decision, or the chair or individual board member that issues, and the chair or president that issues that, either the board chair or it could be someone else that issues that decision on behalf of the board.
Mr. Rogers, any comments, sir?
Yeah, I mean, here's it in a nutshell. It's just, I know the three of y'all ran as a team with a platform of moral openness to the board. Nothing we do tonight is going to change anything that's already in writing now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Fred. I mean, we're still at the point where if three votes, if you require us three votes just to respond, then we'd have to discuss it and we're outside of public comment. So really, we haven't changed anything. Now, I'm fine with the removing emergency out of the existing statement because emergency is too vague, too unresponsive. But other than that, I mean, I really don't see the necessity to change because we haven't changed anything. We've just revoted on a different policy that says the exact same thing that we've already done for the last 45 years.
All right, any other concerns or comments?
He's trying to speak.
Well, I was just gonna say, if it has the benefit of the class, to expand it, it makes it clear in the sentence that board members will, if they feel it's necessary to make a comment or to take action, if it's so important, maybe we don't call it emergency, but we do say this is so important. And we go back to the example about the legislation and board and the honor quarters and so forth. If you do think it's so important, it's necessary, if you do need to respond and take action at that time, at least we get the policy that says that we will. If that's the benefit of it, but you're right that the board is, we act as a majority of three members and say at any time, if we're gonna do this, we're likely to be all in, as the board members.
Any other comments? Mr. Bryant?
You know, when I've been to board meetings in the past, I've watched people make public comments, and the board sat here and didn't say anything whatsoever. And a lot of times, I thought, well, you know, it would have been nice if you could have said, hey, appreciate you coming, appreciate you speaking, you know, we'll look into that or something, just something to make them feel good, to make them feel like, hey, I was listened to, I was heard. That would make a big difference. You notice who's here tonight. I mean, we've got principals, we've got school people here, but do we have the general public here for our board meetings? If they felt like they were, might be included or something, maybe we'd have more participation. And then it would help us in the community with our schools as far as parents and people participating in our schools. Because that's a big negative in our schools, our parents don't, a lot of parents don't participate with the kids like they should. And anything that we could do to help get our parents participating with our kids, it's just gonna be better for our kids. I sort of like the second version there. I like that.
Okay, Ms. Messick?
Well, as I stated the last time about this policy, we've had this policy for over 40 years, and we've had it as, for a reason. It's not to diminish anybody's comments, and I think a lot of occasions, whoever the board chairman was, always thanked them for coming, so they weren't totally ignored. But I do feel like if it says, even though this is underlined, any response by an individual board member shall not be deemed an official response on behalf of the board, that's written in the policy. But unless that person who has to make a comment every time someone speaks, are they gonna say, this is my opinion only, this is not an opinion of anybody else on the board? I doubt if they'll remember to say that every time. And sometimes people come and they have a complaint, and we as a board need to listen to that. But if I make a comment and someone else makes a comment, and we all make a comment, then what's gonna happen is we're gonna feel like we have to make that decision right then while the person's here, and we won't be able to have a chance to deliberate and be united as a board. So I'm gonna read exactly what I've read before. I would like to go on record to oppose changing Policy 2310, Public Participation in Board Meetings. We are now following the North Carolina School Boards Association guidelines and have been since this policy's been adopted, as far as I know. When a board member speaks their opinion, oftentimes the public may interpretate that board member's opinion for all the members on the board. If complaints come before the board during the open forum through public participation and a board member is on record with their opinion, and this conversation goes to a hearing or agreements, that board member would have to be, to have to recuse themselves. A board member during these proceedings could make promises they couldn't keep. A board member can make a comment that could come back in court. Everyone tells one side of the story during public participation. You could possibly start an argument between participants and board members resulting in hard feelings. Also, you might can make some discrimination comments that, you know, you might not be aware that you're doing. I did call and talk to some people in the North Carolina School Board Association about this and their, their legal team down there. And honestly, just because you can do something doesn't mean it's wise to change. Those are my comments. I think this is for the total board's protection. We want to be approached as a board instead of being approached as an individual, and I think it would change us from being approached as a board with public comments than breaking us up into individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Mr. Robertson, any comments?
The, the policy is read every time before somebody speaks, is that correct?
It's been tradition of that statement.
Right. So to me, the, the way, the way it is now, it seems, to me, it just seems a little bit harsh. You know, members of the Board of Education will not respond to individuals. You know, I still say that they take their time to come over and see us, speak their mind, and if, if we want to respond, I don't see the reason we can't respond to it. I think Mr. Johnson even said a while ago that it's really nothing stopping us from responding to it now. Is that correct? The way the policy is now, if we wanted to respond to it, we could still respond to it? Is that correct?
Yes.
So really, to me, the proposed, the amended policy actually says in it, it's, to me, it's more, it's more clear, any response by an individual board member shall not be deemed an official response on behalf of the board. So we're actually saying in the, in the new policy that if I want to make a response, those are my words and not words of the board. So to me, it seems like it adds more clarity to it. I like the proposed amendment that has that written in it. That's it.
Can I ask one quick clarification?
Sure, Mr. Rogers, go right ahead.
Under the public comments, is that the current policy or is that just a statement based on the summation of the current policy?
It's a statement. Yeah, I guess it's a summary based on the current policy.
So why don't we just change the statement and leave the, and, I mean, I don't care, but...
If you don't care, let's just change the policy.
I mean, that's fine, but we need to change summary.
We'll change the statement, too. I think we'll change both of them.
Yeah, again, I don't like the extraordinary or emergency. Didn't like that to start with.
In the second paragraph?
Yeah, because that is too vague. We need to change the statement along with the policy, if we're gonna do it, because we need to clarify and bold point that any response is an individual's response and not that of the board.
Right.
Now, if y'all think that's gonna come across as harsh, rethink, you know, rethink it, but, because what he says, what I say, what Pat says, unless three of us say the same thing, that's not a board opinion, that's an opinion.
Right.
Correct.
Any board members, I don't know if we even need to make that statement?
Oh, yes. Because if I say something or they, they say something, or anybody says anything, it needs to be spelled out that that's not the board's opinion because I spoke.
And I did, you did, I talked about, you said in one of the, at twenty minutes, that I don't want to talk, it isn't mine.
Mr. Johnson, just a point of clarification, when someone has three minutes and someone asks them a question, is, but is that, everything after that then open-ended? You know, if, if I make a three-minute statement and Mr. Bryant were to ask me a clarifying question, and I go on and answer his question and editorialize around that for the next 10 minutes, you know, is, is the board at that point have liberty to say, well, thank you, we just needed that part of the question, we need to move on? And again, that could come across as harsh and difficult as well, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that either the timeframe restarts or you get three more minutes to answer a question, or is it open-ended at that point?
This is how it is, that's, that's where the company model is, so you ask for that four seconds, you do your thirty minutes.
So Dr. Rice, what's your opinion?
This is a board policy.
You're the secretary of the, you're the secretary of the board.
This is the board's rules on legislating the board. Personally, I, I like sticking with School Board Association policy. If, and nothing against anything Mr. Johnson has written, but as they review it and they send out policy updates in two years or three years or whatever, do we remember this conversation? Or does it automatically revert to the, when we revise it, go back to there? Or do they, or do we have to remember then, this one section is something that regardless of what they revise, we keep this back in it? It just, it, as a secretary, it, it's harder to keep all of that straight when you editorialize too much. We have that right now with some of our local policies that aren't recommended by the school board of, when do they get revised? And as we just paid for the service to go through there, they've said, some of the statutes you referenced in that policy that y'all wrote 10 years ago is no longer valid because they're not revising those policies. So I kind of like sticking with the, the recommended from the School Board Association, but again, this is a board policy and the board votes, and I don't have a vote and I don't speak for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a recommendation for how to change the wording in that second paragraph as far as by the board due to an emergency or other exigent reason? Should we say time-sensitive? Who deemed necessary by the board due to a time-sensitive matter? Or Mr. Rogers mentioned removing the emergency?
Well, I just, I like what Fred wrote.
Well, if you, if you look on the, the second paragraph, which is the same in both of these, you could say, except when deemed necessary by the board, due to an emergency or other exigent reason, and then, so you just add that extra phrase in there, you know, when, when the board determines by emergency or exigent reason, then other than that, it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be discussed. But that, that extra phrase on either end of that could clear that up.
Okay.
Yeah, I like adding those four words because that kind of, emergency to me may not be an emergency to you, but the board can still take action to it. But again, all we're doing is just allowing a board member to speak, to say, as you said, thank you, to make them more, feel more welcome, which I could do right now.
You can do that anytime.
Well, and this paper's not a policy, this can be changed before the next meeting or before the next meeting with public comments.
I agree, though, that this newer, you know, addition does make it more clear. I mean, I think originally it was a little more harsh in the fact of saying, you know, you will not speak to members of the public.
But that wasn't the policy, that's the statement.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not changing the, I mean, you can change the policy however you want, and the statement's the same until it's changed.
I think if the policy changes, the statement changes, too.
Yeah, just make them coordinate then.
But does the, does the existing policy say we won't talk?
Uh-uh, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Uh-uh, yeah, it doesn't say that.
But does the existing policy exclude any board member from another board member saying something as far as responsibility, liability, or anything?
No, but you have to know that. You have to know that whatever you say, you know, could... You have to know that whatever you say, you know, could hold you accountable.
It doesn't change legally anything. Or you can't, cannot do this professionally, puts it in writing, I guess the benefit of this, which is tell the others things that you can do, that you've always, always been involved in. For example, he always been in the conversation, looking into what he's talking about.
Right.
Just as a reminder, the current policy, I'm sorry, just as a reminder, the current policy where this is highlighted in yellow, it currently says, "Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of an emerg- of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the, at the time it is received. It will take a unanimous board, but vote of the Board of Educat- board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented." So that, that's what it currently says as opposed to what's highlighted in your choices.
They changed the layer, allowing it to be unusual. That's a good layer included. They changed unanimous to unanimous.
And read the first sentence again?
The unanimous...
Sorry.
The, the first sentence, Ms. Knott, asked me to read again. "Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter." Next paragraph, "Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be, will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vo- vote of the board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented."
So the current policy doesn't sound as harsh. This is what sounds harsh, the statement that we read during public comments. Because it's saying that we can't ask, we just, until we have majority...
The unanimous, the usual, for the emergency, initially, this is emergency. The following video first talks about emergency, you can't take action versus emergency.
Mr. Johnson, is there anything else, excuse my ignorance, this big policy manual, where a unanimous vote is required over a majority when it comes to the board? I thought everything was a majority, but this does say unanimous. I'm not aware of another situation where a unanimous vote is required.
I'm not for any unanimous vote. I mean, 3-2, there's a reason we're an odd number.
I like, I can't believe this, I'm believing for the majority.
This isn't the UN Security Council, so let's keep it unanimous or...
Majority.
Majority.
Right. I mean, I'm fine with the most latest version here that states that board members gen- generally will not respond, so that softens that a bit there as well as clarifies, um, the response if somebody did speak up out of turn or anything. Um, and then I'm also okay with what Mr. Rogers recommended of also editing the, the statement there to make it not as harsh.
It's better if it's not true.
Right, if policy's changing. All right, any other discussion?
Does that need to be moved to...
So which one do you want as a board, as a majority?
Is there a motion to move either to action, because we are acting on this entire, um, series of policies, correct?
Well, tonight would be everyone in that series except for this one, because this one, uh, would need to see it after they decide which one they want or not.
Well, we've been talking about it for over a month, but...
Right.
I don't want to pass, personally, I don't want to pass one until we clarify this.
So we would need a motion for either the current policy or revision A or revision B?
The first one would want to clear, you'd see it as action. Then your motion would...
Would clarify.
It's action, which alternative you want.
Okay. But might I remind, as soon as it's changed, this isn't valid...
Right.
And we as the board need to find out what we want to say to make it valid. So if you move one, if you move it to action and you vote on it, we don't have a public comment for the next meeting. The next regular scheduled meeting, we won't have a public comment that's valid and policy compliant.
So you'd have to change the state.
Yeah, but we'd have to vote as a, as a majority what statement you're willing to vote on or how you want it to read.
You're talking about the...
I don't know that the board has ever voted to approve this document.
Well, it happened sometime around the time I was in second grade, so it's been a while. I don't think anybody here knows.
Well, once we vote on the policy, then just redraft a new statement that corresponds, right? I don't know that it requires the...
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, we move, uh, policy 2310 to action.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, any opposed? Mr. Rogers, thank you. Next we have, so that will be action or as is, action, um, B. I mean, that's going to all go together then, correct? The 2000 series of policies?
Well, uh, policy, the approval of policy 2310 would need to be standalone because we'd have to get, so that, that would be item F.
Item F, okay, 2310.
Um, oh, remember, what is, um, D?
D is budget amendment, Fund Eight, number one.
Next we have discussion of tiered bus routes. Dr. Taylor?
Board members, uh, earlier in the year, Dr. Rice asked myself and Mr. Langford to take a look at our transportation costs and our overall transportation program. And we have put together a presentation that we're going to work through tonight. Mr. Langford and Dr. Rice will be available to talk at any point during this, but we have some information to share with you and we have some solutions that we'd like to share with you for your consideration. Some of the problems and issues or concerns that we have is our, number one, is our low efficiency rating. Right now in Stokes County, our efficiency rating is 82.86. The state average is 92.68. And just in layman's terms, if you have an efficiency rating of 100%, the state gives you $100 for every $100 you spend. We're at 82%, so you see the difference. We're spending roughly $18 out of local money for every hundred that we, we spend. We operate 75 buses a day. We currently have six driver openings. Here's a number I want you to remember. Over the last five years, we have spent $1.287 million of local money in transportation in Stokes County. That's an average of $257,410 of local money per year. This is a graph. It just breaks down how much was budgeted and how much was spent. We went back to 15, 16, all the way through last year, because this year, we're, of course, in the middle of the year and we don't have those numbers as of yet. You can see, beginning in 1617, the number we budgeted on the left and the number we spent is on the right. You can see in 1617, we spent quite a bit more. 1718 was a jump. 1819 was actually fairly even. Last year, that number looks the way it does because if you will remember, in March of last year, we quit running buses. So that's why we did not spend as much last year as what we had budgeted. Why do these problems exist? We operate too many buses. We have not reduced the number of buses to match the loss of students over the last several years. Most, if not all, school districts across North Carolina cannot find enough drivers. We have six openings. And we have to supplement the transportation budget with local money to run the program. This gives you an idea of our district enrollment versus ridership, and you can see the trend. You've talked about as a board that we're losing students, we're also losing riders, but overall, we've not reduced the number of buses that we're running. What are our goals and objectives? To increase our state efficiency rating, decrease the number of buses that we operate on a daily basis, to reduce the number of driver openings we have, and reduce the amount of local money we spend on transportation, so that money in turn can be used somewhere else. We have a solution that we would like to present to you for your consideration. We would like to talk about a tiered system of routes that would reduce the number of buses we operate. We would assign a set number of buses to each attendance area. This system would not involve elementary students riding with older students. They would ride the same buses, but at different times. For example, in the northern attendance area, we would have 16 buses. Those 16 buses would run elementary routes first, then once those were finished, they'd go back and run middle and high school routes. This would reduce the number of buses we need across the district, reduce the number of drivers we need, and that would in turn increase our efficiency rating and would reduce the amount of local money we spend. What that solution would look like would be, in the northern district, we would go from 19 buses to 17, south district from 22 to 20, the west district from 27 to 26. Early college would drop one. Meadowbrook would remain the same. We just, we, we've looked a lot of different ways to make that work, shuttle route, shuttle stops, satellite stops, but we felt like the best thing to do would just be to leave that as it is right now. So that would involve removing six buses from our fleet, would eliminate the need of those six drivers. It would increase our efficiency rating to 88.33, that's what we're estimating, and it would reduce the amount of local money budgeted needed for transportation by approximately Additional benefit, it would increase the number of buses serving each school without adding overall buses, would reduce drive time for students, potentially resulting in increased ridership, and it would increase the driver hours. So for example, if I'm a driver that typically drove an hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half in the afternoon, I may now drive three hours in the morning and three hours in the afternoon because I'm driving a second route. Changes this would require, this would impact some of our students, staff, and families. Some of our schools would have to change their start and stop times to allow this system to work. While we would be operating fewer buses, they would, those operating the buses would be driving more time and more miles, creating more driver cost, but we believe those costs would be offset by the savings that we would generate. What the changes would look like? We would have to have uniform start and stop times across the district to make this work. We could not allow one elementary school to start and stop at, at a certain time and someone else in a different part of the county do something different. So one example would be elementary schools could start at 7:20 and end at 2 o'clock. Middle and high schools would start at 8:30 and end at 3:20. You see the drive, the examples that we have there for drivers and how they could be impacted. That's a quick summary of what we have put together. Dr. Rice, Mr. Langford, do you have anything to add?
For those that have been around, this is the system that's been working in the western district, uh, for years now, since before I've been here and probably a while before that, where we will have King Elementary School buses that will run then a West Stokes route. Mount Olive buses run a Chestnut Grove route. And so it is a, this is a very common solution in city schools district. Uh, one reason it has not been attempted, uh, we've, even though we've talked about it every, just about every year, the four years I've been here internally, is because of the large area that is covered in the northern district that does require some changes in the school day. And so right now, on average, our elementary schools normally start around 7:50, uh, and North Stokes High School, uh, I believe starts at, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, North Stokes start, usually starts 7:47, is that correct? Right about 7:50. Uh, they would have to move their time to 8:30 to allow for a second route to be run with the elementary starting at 7:20. Uh, it doesn't require that big of a jump currently in the western district because it is such a smaller landmass that those buses cover, but it would require that in the south and in the north. And so with that, anytime you chan- change the school day time, uh, it's a shock to people's system, it's pushback, if you will, it's, it's usually some negative feedback initially until people get used to that. But again, uh, the potential savings is around $200,000 a year, and as we start at the next work session talking about budget, uh, when we start talking about, well, is there a way to have more money? We wanted to be able to have, what to say, we have a solution to get some more money if, as that's needed, if, if that's needed, as that's needed.
Mr. Langford, anything to add?
Well, just, I, I can write, sum it up, and I can have a rendition of the presentation. I agree. Uh, like I said, the King area's been doing this for years, we haven't tried it in the other two areas, but we've got a lady, Stephanie Robinson, that worked for Charlotte Mecklenburg School System. She's, uh, she's been doing games for many, many years. She actually is sort of a master at it. She actually teaches games. So she's been helping us put this model together. We feel confident in these numbers. We feel like we can make this work with these times, Dr. Rice and Dr. Taylor. The first time she gave it to us, um, we were looking at cutting, uh, an extra bus at north, but it was going to cause north having to start later, like around 8:30. That's almost nine o'clock, is Dr. Rice calling that. That was a little harsh, so we added a bus back. That got our time back to around 8:30. That coincidentally is what south starts at now, so, and, and, uh, west starts around 8:25. So, so we had all our high schools consistent times, our middle schools, our elementary schools. Uh, I think it would, I mean, personally, I think it would work better, but, uh, but anyway, we feel confident that we can make this work with these fail times, with the, this number of cuts. And they're absolutely right. We, we are having a hard time, and we have for years, in attracting bus drivers. And that's not just in Stokes County, that's nationwide. But I think right now, from Site County, 60 drivers short. Uh, we are six, but when we only run seven, 75, and they run 400, proportionally, it's about seven. So six is, is, is hard for us to find as it is for 60 today. So, uh, we just, having less buses, a need for less drivers, uh, I think is a good thing. We came up with these numbers, you know, they, one bus probably cost us roughly $40,000 a year, you know, time you calculate fuel, tires, oil, parts, driver costs. So that's, you know, cutting, that's where we were coming up with those savings. Last year, just to give you an example, Dr. Taylor mentioned it earlier, where we got out of school, basically shut down operations last year in March. Uh, sort of to give you a comparison, last year at this time, we had, we had, uh, used about 135,000 gallons of fuel. This year, same time, we're, we're only, you set it down. So we cut our fuel consumption in half this year. That's going to be a savings, but that, you know, that will be there next year when we back to full operations. We do need to do something to look at getting our budget ready now.
Again, Dr. R- I'm sorry?
We'd be looking at making these changes for starting school next year?
Well, Dr. Rice wanted us to... Well, Dr. Rice wanted us to bring this to the board for your consideration early enough that if that's a decision that you would like for us to move forward, to give us enough time to communicate these changes with our families and staff, to make them aware of what those changes would look like. So we could make it work next year if you were to decide as a board early enough to let us know to move forward. We could, I don't want to speak to Dr. Rice.
And I would not suggest moving this to action tonight to make that. And so I think this is something that, you know, I, I, the, the strength of a board is you're touching a lot of different community members. And so as you're out and about to discuss this and get feedback, again, an elementary start day at 7:20 is earlier than it is now, about 7:50. But again, it's shorter rides. And so that's one thing that, you know, when we looked at how many people chose Plan C, it was amazing that the, it was a higher percentage at the northern schools than it was others. And I think a lot of that has to do with ride times. I mean, if you get on a bus for 15 minutes versus getting on a bus for an hour and a half, and now you have an option to stay home and you're not going to be on a bus for three hours a day, that's an appealing option. But now our ride times would be much shorter. And so that would, that possibly could help ridership as well. And to be honest, it helps us on weather days when we don't have to make a decision at 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the morning because we've got buses that are taking off so early. And so that would give us more time to make weather decisions as well. But the adverse effect is the biggest change in here would be elementary school day starting about 30 minutes earlier.
And, and we did want to give this early, give this to you early enough so you could ask questions, digest it, share it with others. This is for information at this point. Ms. Knight, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Um, he sort of, you know, hit on that as far as how much would it back up a rider's time to get on the bus? Say if they get on the bus now at seven, you know, would they see like, is the bus going to show up 20, 30 minutes earlier than seven, you know?
Well, with shorter rider times, we would hope that that, that time would not be pushed too much early.
Right now, we try to not pick up anybody before six. And with this, we still will not be picking up anybody before six.
I think that would be the big variant that would concern some parents if it was going to be a huge shift in much earlier. And then, you know, of course, teachers, if they feel like they're already getting there as early as possible in elementary and then seven, you know, 20 is quite a bit earlier. Have you considered something like a 15-minute window the other direction with elementary and middle and high? Like 7:35 to 2:15 versus 8:45 to 3:35?
The difference with that is it moves everything 15 minutes. And so if you were to start, I mean, sure. If you went and split that difference, then your high schools would start at 8:45, which then gets them out of school around 3:45, which the high school schedule is,
35.
is not as bad in the afternoons because of athletics. But it does affect some sports that don't have lights. And when you get around that time change, they want to get out. And I don't, I don't want to make it a habit of everybody leaving fourth period 30 minutes early.
Right.
Academics are the first thing that we do. It's a student athlete. But the reality is if you're going to play a golf match at West Wilkes, you have to get there. And you're, then you're chasing daylight. So there would, the later the school day goes, the more class you would miss on some of those type athletics. You know, our, the football, basketball, those would not be affected because those are going to have lights and the same times would be there. But those outdoor sports with cross-country, golf, a lot of tennis courts don't have the lights. Those things, it would be more problematic needing to leave school early. And, and so that's, the later you push the day, the more that comes into it.
A lot of middle school sports would be impacted because very few middle school sports have lights.
Most middle school sports start at 4:30.
Of course, I think Mr. Langford stated that nobody's picked up now before six, is that correct? And then even with the new schedule, they still wouldn't be picked up before six?
Correct.
So that part of, wouldn't be part of any difference in it?
The, the biggest difference, to be honest, is going to be the working parents that start at eight, that like to drop off their kids on the way to work, you know, drop them off at 7:45, then they got 15 minutes to get to work. Now, if they drop them off at 7:20, they're going to be even earlier to work. And they, that may, you know, alter their, their schedule. It, it, the bigger impact's going to be felt, I believe, with kids, parents that take their children to school versus the, the car riders versus the bus riders.
And it's also a cultural thing, you know, we were talking about fail times. I graduated in 1984 from North Stokes, and we were at 7:45 back then. We've been to 7:45 ever since. So, you know, people are always resistant to change. So if you change that fail time from 7:45 to 8:20 or 8:30, that's going to be sort of a culture shift.
Ironically, talking to Mr. Ricey about that, I, I, I did run this past him because his school had the, the longest time change difference. And he actually said, you know, with a younger teaching staff now that is driving further to get to school, that actually might be a welcome change for them.
And I think the big thing too is it's more efficient. It saves us money.
Yes.
And, and I think that's something that we definitely have to look at.
And I just want to make one more comment. Dr. Taylor mentioned, you know, we did cut buses. Well, we ran 75 last year and 75 this year. But I started here in this position in 2007. We had 94 buses that year and we had 4,252 rides. And of course, last, this last count, we're down to 2,560 riders and 75 buses. So we have cuts.
When's the last, when is the last time we made a significant cut in buses?
We cut two buses in 16 or 17?
In 17, 79 down to 75.
Okay. But that was done without us changing the time. That just was, it did make rides longer. And that's the thing, we could, we could accomplish the same thing now by, but with, but, but we'd have to make a lot longer bus rides.
Yes.
Uh, I know when I've driven a bus, Germanton has two buses right now. They just about could fit everybody on one. But that would be an extremely long bus ride. That would help our efficiency rating and all that. But you would have kids getting on the bus at 5:00 AM for a 7:50 start at school.
And, and the state looks at the number of young people you carry and the number of buses you carry them on. And the fewer buses you use, the better your efficiency.
If you have a 72-passenger bus, they want 72 passengers on it. We still would not be doing that. But if you ran 40 riders on it and then ran a second route with 40 more riders on it, now that 72-passenger bus has carried 80 students, and that helps our efficiency.
Gotcha, okay. All right, any other questions?
I ain't gone yet, so I'm going to jump right in. Because I'm on the business side of the world. We're saving $200,000. What's our healthcare cost? Because now we've carried everybody over the magic 30 hours a week. So we're now in the, so what's the benefit component going to be for those? How many bus drivers, 71?
Well, all of them, go ahead, go ahead.
69 and about, oh, 20, 25 is already there. So it's not going to be that all of them will now be on benefits.
And again, the state would pay 90% of that healthcare as well. We would be only responsible for 10% of it.
But at 30 hours, does it become a permanent with benefits? And now we're talking state retirement, Ms. Moore? So we're looking at 45 people that were, and I'm all for it. I mean, we need to get these people taken care of. But there is that composite of 45 people that we're now offering benefits to. Even if state pays 10%, all but 10% of the healthcare, the retirement cost. I don't know if they'd have overtime because they're just.
If they have a contract route, they shouldn't have a lot of overtime.
But what are we looking at in our, in our composite contribution for retirement per person-ish? So several thousands of dollars. I mean, if you had to guess, ish, 45 people.
The salary right there, the average bus driver makes about $13 a mile.
Okay, so if we do 13 times 30, that's 390 times 26%, right? So we're just minus 75.
Well, and the routes are going to vary some too. There's going to be some, some variation in route.
All of them won't go to six, but it'd be a lot closer.
Yeah, that, that was an example.
Yeah, I mean, we're just throwing general numbers because I, I want the other four members to be aware that this is a potential $100 per week, per 45. So times 45, and we'll just say four weeks in the year. So it's $20,000 a week that we're going to spend in, or $20,000 a month in benefits. Times six, 105,000. So of the 200, we may only be saving 100,000.
And that's why we sit in, why I mentioned the presentation. We, we are aware there's going to be some extra driver costs. But we do believe the savings that we would reap by doing this will outweigh those costs.
Well, I think will outweigh it. I just don't want everybody to say, we're going to save $200,000, $200,000, not realizing on the back end, there's another hurdle we've got to go over that's going to cost that delta. So now it becomes a, is it worth it to put the kids on the bus and modify the time for half of the anticipated savings?
Right.
And we're, with, there's no way to quantify whether we're going to see 200,000 or 300,000 or 100,000.
And, and you're, you're exactly right on that because we are a year behind reimbursement model anyway. And so it's, it's very difficult to figure the actual, Ms. Moore and I, when we look at budget every year, we're kind of throwing a dart at a dartboard to figure out what we need to throw from local budget into transportation after it all shakes out anyway. So that is very difficult to figure all that out.
I mean, my personal opinion, I like the plan. I'm for the plan. I'm for the drivers, perhaps if they did have benefits, take the 200,000 benefit. Now we have better driver retention. We have longer-term quality employees.
That's a good point.
And that, that's another part of this. With benefits, it becomes a more attractive job to try to find drivers or compete with, and I'm friends with other superintendents in the area, but sometimes we compete for the same pool. And if our pool is getting benefits, that maybe makes somebody come back across the line to us.
And ultimately, you know, we're averaging $250,000 a year in local money. We want to be able to say to you, now, that money can be freed up to use potentially in another area. We, we've just got to do something about our efficiency rating. Our efficiency rating is, it's not good.
Again, I'm for it. I just want everybody to be aware of it.
Yes. And, and we do want to save money. But yeah, the other, I feel, my personal feeling is to be able to attract more bus drivers. I know for Seid, just, their board just approved a $15 an hour minimum cost for bus drivers at 15 and up. And they're looking at going to having every one of their drivers be in benefits next year. It's going to be harder and harder and harder for us to compete for that same pool of drivers. And, uh, like I say, we're all, we're all in that boat of, of shortage.
We get in a gray area of is it, you know, more about savings or more about retention? And we're somewhere in the middle, it sounds like.
We want to save.
And there is a point, there is a point of diminishing returns as well, as Mr. Rogers said.
Right.
If we're going to save $15,000, it may not be worth the headache that could potentially come with it. If we're saving 150, then it may be worth the other things.
Personally, I'd like to see a little, give Ms. Moore a little time to, you know.
And even if it's a break even, if we have better employees and happier employees and more loyal employees, we're a better system.
Exactly. When you said that at 82%, the state was giving us 82 out of 100 bucks, right?
That's a general way of explaining it.
Every $100 we spend, they're paying us 82.
That's the Cliff Notes version.
With the new efficiency at 88, that gives us six more bucks out of every $100. Is that included in the 200?
That's how you got to the 200.
That, that's how we generated those potential savings, yes, sir.
I just want to be sure that's how you got there, okay.
We were just projecting cost versus money we're bringing, getting from the state.
Right.
And the budget rating is a very complicated thing. And we talked about it, Ms. Moore and I, Dr. Rice, Dr. Taylor. It, it's hard to explain exactly how they get it. But they look at what they call the frontier counties. Counties that have the, the highest ridership and the lowest cost. And everybody else is compared to this. So in a given year, let's say if their numbers change, you know, that's going to affect everybody else's. Now, it's hard to just give you a, a certain number. Like, if we do this, we're going to be at 89. We could be at 88, we could be at 90. I mean, we're close with that projection.
Right. The, the last thing I'll share, there are school districts in North Carolina that make money off of transportation. The one I just left received about 60-some thousand dollars a year that could be spent on about anything.
When I was in Ashburn City, we ran about 115% efficiency rating. And we didn't worry about money.
So y'all are the one that blew the curve for us.
We, we ran three routes. We ran, and we ran full buses.
What time did elementary start?
The elementary schools started at 7:30. But, and then the middle school started at eight and the high school started at 8:30. But we could, we could fill up a 72-passenger bus in 30 minutes because we could pull up to an apartment building and put 30 kids on it, pull up to a housing project, put 30 more kids on it, and then go back to the school.
Well, Ashburn City Schools did not have a bus going from the northern end down to the south all the time.
We drove nowhere near a road toward Francisco.
They, our average driver, our average route is 100 miles a day. Theirs might have been 25.
We, we were 21 square miles and had 4,500 students. So we only had 1,000 less students, but 21 square miles versus, you know, 20. Yeah.
We were asked.
You know that all pan, right?
Yep, okay.
We, we were asked to give you some options, potentially ways to save money. And that's what we wanted to share tonight.
And I, I appreciate what y'all did.
I mean, I'm fine going forward. I just want everybody to know. It seems like to me that the biggest thing is just the start times for the school. If we're not getting on the bus any, any earlier than six, either way.
It's the car riders that's the difference.
It's the car riders and the start times for the schools.
Which percent of our?
And all the studies say, you know, later start times for elementary is beneficial, but we're making it earlier and earlier, so.
What percentage are car riders now?
Uh, we have about 2,200 bus riders, Brad?
2,500.
2,500 out of 5,600.
Yeah, so half, half of us.
But most of our riders are, most of our riders are elementary and middle school. Uh, high school because they're driving and riding with friends and stuff. So it is coming from those lower areas. But there's a lot of cars pull up in front of our schools.
And that's, that's a cultural change too. I mean, again, I was in school in the seventies and early eighties and everybody rode the bus.
Right. Well, and car riders, in high school, some of those car riders are the students driving.
Right.
And their parents actually not taking the student. It's the student actually driving herself.
I'd like to ask a question, Ms. Langford. Ms. Langford, what, what is the earliest the bus driver has to get on the road?
Well, our Meadow Brook buses, because they travel so far, they do leave at 5:30. But they don't pick up a kid at 5:30. They're leaving before they park, driving out to the first pickup.
They'll drive from Meadow Brook to Sandy Ridge before they'll pick up the first car. But before they pick up their first person. So all that's ride time before they get there.
But if I, 5 to 5:30, some of those.
No, earlier.
Sorry?
No, earlier than 5 or 5:30.
That, that issue is because we're parking, the guy that's going to Sandy Ridge is now parking early. Meadow Brook, so he's not leaving hazard. The other gentleman leaves Meadow Brook and goes sort of toward the west end. He's on the road early. I mean, it's, but again, now he's not picking kids up. He's leaving and driving 45 minutes or so to his first stop.
Uh, do you feel like that the drive times, the earlier that the bus drivers drive, isn't that one of the reasons we have a hard time getting bus drivers? Because they're on the road so much?
Those two are a little bit different. They actually want time. But our average driver that drives in elementary and middle and high, they're not leaving till around 6. And they're not on the road as well. That's just the extreme because Meadow Brook covers the whole gap.
Do you supervise the EC buses too?
We have nine EC buses.
So don't they have to get on the road pretty early?
They get on the road pretty early, but they're not, there's, there's nine of them picking them up. It's, it's open too, so they're not running routes like the Meadow Brook.
Is it more than by 5 o'clock? Is it more than, by 5 o'clock? That's, that's pretty early, you know, as some ages start.
They're not, no, they, they probably leave at 5:30.
From their school?
From their school to go pick up their first kid.
Because all the buses are parked at the schools.
They are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know what times.
Okay.
And what time, how much are we paying our bus drivers? Did you say 13 an hour?
That's accurate. They start at 12:07. And then we've got some boats that have been with us for 40 years, and they're up at the top, top of them. You know, which is a little over 18. I think the state, what does the state stop at? I mean, it's 15, 16 or something? Yeah, so both, there's only two, but from 12:07 at the bottom to 15, something at the top. But the average driver is around 13, a little over 13 dollars.
And are we competitive with the other counties?
Other rural counties.
Sorry?
Other rural counties.
Other rural counties, yes, ma'am. Obviously, the urban areas have some bad places.
Can't all compete.
And that's just one reason that, like I said, Forsyth went to 15 because they can't find drivers. They're trying to do it all again. But we've had drivers leave and go there and stay a short period of time and come back.
Well.
I mean, there's a lot of different issues when you're talking about, you know, they don't like having to deal with traffic and others to say, well, I mean, it's, there's just a lot of other barriers. And, you know, we've got a lot of folks that love driving at camp. But yeah, it is important to try to be competitive, but I would think we're way out of mark on that.
Okay, well, good. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Any other concerns or comments? If not, we'll move on to discussion of relaunch 2021.
Board, I know we had exciting news last week that we could move to Plan A. We will do that next Monday. After speaking with everybody and needing to get food and bus routes to people, the logistics beat out my excitement of trying to get them in today. And so we decided that if we got them there, we need, if we got, brought everybody back, we actually needed to get them on a bus and get them fed. So we did put that off a week till next week, but we're excited about that. Our numbers continue to be great. I expect the health department's been updating Monday night the last few weeks. This is a week-old data for them. There's 52 active cases in the county as of last Monday night. So two teachers will be out tomorrow, but not with positive test results. So our, today, out of nearly 6,500 total people, we had one person out today. So I'm very pleased with that. I left in there the event capacity numbers because that's what we're going to be looking at for not only our athletic events, but graduations. The end of the year celebrations, I've got a little note in there that we will be using these numbers to try to hold as traditional of events as possible. With that, in the past, we have had rain locations. We have gone inside the gym instead of being at the athletic stadiums. We would like to avoid that this year. And so I want to get the board consensus on this so I can let my principals know. They would rather have rain dates
Yeah.
than to have go inside. Because when we go back inside a gym, we're limited to around that 250 mark again. As our biggest in North would be down to 185. But we would like to have rain dates. And everyone is comfortable with just moving theirs to the next night if possible? The one that that may be an issue for, and I wanted, I really wanted your opinion on this one, is West Stokes. West Stokes traditionally graduates Saturday morning. They would like to look at a Saturday evening date as a rain date case. It's a passing shower that morning. They could announce that, okay, we'll do this at 5 o'clock this evening or whatever. But then the other thing would be, is Sunday afternoon, they wanted me to ask, is Sunday afternoon an option? Or is that, do they need to move to Monday if it was a rank, still is a rain date? They wanted to know if the board had an issue with a Sunday afternoon graduation.
So my question is, if, say, North's rain date is backed up a day, that moves it Thursday to Friday, which lays it on top of South. South backs up 24 hours. They put it Saturday night. Now they're bumping West if West gets moved.
Well, they would not ask, they've asked not to bump anyone that, other than the adults, the Board of Education and myself. So if North gets rained out on Thursday night, they would want to graduate on Friday night if South is graduating on Friday night. And then board members could choose to go to one or the other. I would probably stick with the scheduled event at that point. So in that scenario, I would miss North and go to South the scheduled event. And I think everyone will live a long, healthy life if they don't hear me speak. And so they, they would want to take care of the kids first and let the adults fall where they may at that point with doing that rain date on the next night.
Do we have our dates?
Do we have what?
Our graduation dates.
Yes, ma'am. The board set those last year and-
But I mean, do we have them on this page?
I don't know that you have them in front of you. They are... Ms. Chief, you're there. If you can help me off the top of your head?
May 27th to North Stokes, May 28th to South Stokes, May 29th at 9:00 to West. I believe it's May 1st at 9:00 to the other.
Thank y'all.
May, May 1st, their own goal.
So, May, starting May 27th, 28th and 29th are our traditional days, and May 1st would be the early college.
What would be 12 o'clock?
Meadow Brook.
Meadow Brook would be on Saturday, the 29th at noon. And I believe they're looking at Poplar Springs, having theirs inside. They have such few graduates, they can do theirs inside.
Poplar Springs Elementary?
I'm sorry?
Poplar Springs Elementary?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So West is at 9 o'clock?
Yes, sir. And the others are at 7? But rain dates in looking at that next day. But again, the big question out of West Stokes was, is are y'all okay with a Sunday afternoon graduation if it were to come to that?
I think I am.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with the rain date, what they want to do.
Double schedule.
What time is the early college?
That I don't know. We can get that information for you, but I don't have that in front of me. Also with the, I've updated the numbers for you in your packet in tonight's section about the number of students that have chosen Plan C. Again, with high schools, that could, and secondary schools, that could change because we had already sent out that questionnaire before the Senate bill was passed. But that gives you an idea of the percentages of people. Right now, 7.2% of our elementary school students have chosen Plan C. 31% of our middle school students have chosen Plan C. 43% of our high school students have chosen Plan C. And at Meadow Brook, it's about 44%, which again, Meadow Brook has some of the longest bus rides in the county. And the other thing about, about high school that is, I don't want you to take that as a slot to the high school. If you have, are a high school student and you have one face-to-face on-campus class, you have senior English, you may have three Forsyth Tech classes. And a lot of students have that schedule. Forsyth Tech is 100% online right now. So if you have first period online and then a second period English class, when do you drive to campus? You would have to leave your Forsyth Tech class early, and then you would have to drive back home and get back home for your online classes for Forsyth Tech in the afternoon. In some cases like that, it's just much easier to just stay home all day and do that one class online for consistency. Same thing with the early college. The upperclassmen that take all Forsyth Tech classes at the early college, they're all online. So those students are going to be on C regardless, unless they just want to come for our internet, and we have accommodated those that need to do that.
Do you foresee this changing much since the bill passed?
I do. I think more students will come back to us. We've set a deadline of three days after we come back to school to make that choice.
Okay.
And so when we come back on Monday, by Wednesday of that week, they make their choice at that point of where they want to be moving forward. But we have already seen, after the push that we did and the phone calls and the the stuff, we have already had more students come back from Plan C to Plan B at that point, which will now be Plan A.
All right. All right, thank you.
It is outside of the school days. The school year is over. The instructional days are over. For seniors. And for all students, if, without calendar adjustment with weather, but we would still hold for our seniors. No grades will be earned or lost. Baccalaureate? Sure. And that's why we wanted two dates on that Saturday. I mean, to do morning or evening to try to avoid it if at all possible. But when you move into the next week, we're trying to also be accommodating to families that travel from in from out of town, not to take into account another workday on a Monday. Not 2020, obviously, because last year we got out of school. But the year before, the High School Athletic Association held the state track championships on a Sunday because of rain out. And they needed to, they had A&amp;T Stadium, and so they held it on Sunday afternoon. So there, there is precedence for school extracurricular events to be held on Sunday.
Of course, I guess if they moved it to Sunday, it would probably be in the afternoon, 2 o'clock, it'd be, so it wouldn't conflict with the-
We would not, we would not conflict with the church service, no.
Is advertised in advance to all the other options you could run into? Okay. We'll move on. Next, we have discussion, item H, the 12-month calendar, Stokes Early College, option A and B.
Board members, you have in front of you just a 12-month calendar that highlights the holidays in the next year's calendar, 21, 22. You also have two options of a, of an early college calendar. If you will remember, the early college calendar is not developed by our calendar committee because Forsyth Tech basically sets this calendar. So you have option A that includes five virtual days, and you have option B that does not include the five virtual days. So those would be dependent upon what the General Assembly does with the virtual days.
And what we did, and basically last time, was approve Calendar B. And then if we're required to do the five optional days, we would go back and make that revision.
Okay.
Any questions about the calendars?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have the action agenda. We have action item.
If we could move the calendar, early college calendar.
Both options there, A and B.
Make a motion to move the calendar selection deck.
I second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh.
That'll be item G. First, on the action agenda, we have approval of personnel and coaching report. Is there a motion?
Does this include the amended?
This will be the amended coaching report.
Make a motion to approve the amended coaching report.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
And personnel and coaching.
Thank you.
I second that.
Seconded by Ms. Messick. All those in favor? Next, we have item B, approval of policy 2000 series.
That's all the 2000 policies minus 2310.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the policies minus 2310.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve item C and D, the finance-
Expense Fund 2, Amendment 1, Expense Fund 8, Amendment 1.
Yeah.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Next, we have item E, the North Stokes Roof Project, the Building B roof in Lawsonville Elementary Roof.
Make a motion to accept the, to the roof and project.
That's right.
Seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor? Next, we have item F, the 2310 policy. And there was no clarification at the time it was moved to action, so now we would need clarification on which version. And this was moved to action by whom? Do they need to clarify at this time, Mr. Johnson?
I'll make a motion to approve option B of 2130.
And which would that be?
That's the second one.
That the alternative?
The one with the underline in it.
Yeah, that's the one with, that's the, the second one. B, the one, you know, the second one presented by Fred.
One that states that you're not speaking but for yourself, not for the entire board.
Is that, is that correct, Ms. Rogers?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We have item G, the early college calendar options there. I need a motion, please.
I make a motion. We approve the early college calendars.
I second that.
Seconded. Thank you. All those in favor? Next, we have information and announcements, as well as fundraising requests, the PMR and calendars.
Board members, you see the dates that are fact, quickly approaching the Easter break and, excuse me, Easter holiday and spring break. You see that broken down. Your next board meeting is scheduled for March the 29th. That is a-
Work session.
Work session, thank you. And then your next meeting will be April the 19th. You see those fundraisers for information. You have the six-month PMR for your review. And then you have the most up-to-date calendars for both the traditional and early college.
All right, thank you.
May I make a suggestion to Mrs. Baljak? Just for, not me especially. Could you include in the next time the graduation dates and the alternative rain dates? I think I put those in my calendar a long time ago, but I need to make sure. And the times. Thank you.
I would just need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All those in favor? Thank y'all so much. Have a great night.
Hey, Dr. Taylor. What is on the West Stokes High School, the fundraisers? They have a SNAP raise.
7 o'clock.
What is that? You have any idea?
That is the volleyball coach. Do you have any additional information for the SNAP raise?
What is the SNAP raise for, under facility upgrades? But what is the?